Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the October 31st, 2016 regular meeting. Carl, could you please call the, uh, call the roll? Oh, and happy Halloween. Anyway, I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:28. Carl, please call the roll. Call the roll, please. Carl, could you call the roll?
John.
Here.
Louis.
Louis.
Marat.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Doug.
Yeah.
Marcy. Chris. Carl. We've got a call.
Okay, um, so the first. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. So I need a, I need a motion to approve the, August 23rd, 2016, regular meeting minutes and to waive the reading. Uh, do I have a motion to that effect? Anybody want to make that motion?
There's only two people in the way.
Okay. Louis makes the motion. Any second? I'll set, okay, Lu, uh, sorry. Doug seconds it. Any discussion? Any objection? It's approved. The next item on the agenda is the President's Message. Give me one second. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome back all the snowbirds back to our beautiful village and to update you on some of what's been going on since you were away. First and foremost, as you can see, we have a new property manager. Dan Serlich, who started earlier this month, has a strong background in both condo property management as well as mechanical and electrical design engineering, as well as a strong commitment to cost savings. And he's been hard at work over the last few weeks on a number of fronts, which he will summarize in his manager's report in a few minutes. A number of you have already had the opportunity to meet Dan in person, but please help me welcome him to the village by giving him a warm international village welcome. In other important news, as I announced two months ago, we recently obtained approval for a two-month refinance of our Hurricane Womah loan at a lower interest rate thanks to the association's strengthening financials and reduced delinquency rate. As a result of our improved budget picture, I'm very happy to report that international village unit owners can look forward to a modest cut in maintenance fees for an unprecedented third year in a row. Check your, thank you. Check your mail in the coming days for your 2017 budget and proxy. Be sure to vote yes in favor of waiving reserves and mail back your proxy or drop it off at the association office as soon as possible because we'll need, we'll need it to approve the maintenance fee reduction. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, is the treasurer's report? Next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report? Marat.
Yeah.
Okay, now it's better. So as of, uh, October 2016, uh, we are under budget almost 12,000 for October, so, I mean, I'm sorry, for September. It's always a good news, I guess. And, you know, we are, uh, under budget for, you know, that, uh, you know, the water bills and, but we are cutting off some, you know, expenses under management. I believe we are going to do better for October 2016.
What are you cutting back on?
Well, we are back already, that's what I was saying.
Now, what are you cutting back on?
Well, uh, mostly come from, you know, that repairs and we done the first, you know, the first six months of.
Well, I see that there is less people working here.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
I mean.
You're paying less, uh, less salaries too.
You have less people working here, so you're saving on salary, but that means that also the people are not taking care of the buildings and things like that because there is low, we don't have that much help.
No, maintenance people, we're not cutting for maintenance.
No, I didn't say maintenance. I said that people working in, well, even purpose working in the buildings. I don't have garbage picked up and things like that unless I call it in. So you're saving money, you're saving money because?
Not, not for the salaries, no. Not, not all of them. I mean, maybe a little bit because we don't have a system manager.
Well, this is your financial report. Can I give you your treasurer's report? Why don't you tell me a little bit more about your financial report? I mean, just expand on it.
Yeah.
I mean, Marcy, we, we're not the professionals here. We do have a, we do have an accounting company that does the accounting for us.
I mean, all the other times, John, all the other boards, we always had,
Right.
you know, at least knowing what the heck was going on. One sentence doesn't make.
Well, we do have a budget meeting coming up soon. Our, um, Campbell controller will be here for that meeting, so you can ask him all the detailed questions you have. But remember that we're all volunteers, so we don't have the nitty gritty, everything.
Well, this is your choice, John. You choose to do this, so you should have all the things.
Okay, Marcy, Marcy. The treasurer's report is basically based on the financials. The financials are the numbers that, that he just gave you. How much were under budget or over budget?
12,000 dollars. 12,000 dollars of the interest number.
Correct.
Almost.
Yeah, but the legal fees, how much were they during the year of 2016?
Okay, I don't have all that right in front of me.
Well, I'd like to have that before the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, well, sure. I mean, if not before, then tomorrow.
No, I want, I would like to know, I mean, because you have, every time you have a closed meeting, you have a legal, you have to have.
No, that's not true. Closed meetings are for two, two different categories. It's either legal or personnel.
You can't have a closed meeting unless you have a legal.
That's not true, that's not true. It's, it's pretty legal or personnel. It's not, it doesn't have to be legal at your time.
Every time you've had a meeting, it's posted, it says legal on there.
Okay, sometimes the attorney wasn't able to be reached, so therefore that item was waived. Um, so it's not been always legal.
Then, then you're not supposed to have a means.
That's not, I'm sorry, Marcy, that's not true. I'm very familiar with, with, uh, DPPR rules.
But don't worry about that also.
Okay, if, if, if it's a personnel issue, you do not need a lawyer, lawyer there. Only for legal issues, you need a lawyer. So if we didn't discuss legal issues at a particular meeting, we didn't need a lawyer there.
Then how come my period was posting?
Okay, I already answered that question. If, if the attorney wasn't available, then that item wasn't discussed. So what was that?
Why is it closed if there's no lawyer there?
Uh, I, I, third time. If it's a personnel issue, you do not, you do not need a lawyer there and personnel issues under chapter 718, um, can be closed meetings.
You have to maintain the confidentiality of the situation.
Right, confidentiality is very important when it comes to personnel issues.
I'm trying to see what you said, you don't know what's going on.
That's not what I said. I never said that. You're just putting words in my mouth, no. I never, what did I say to that? Check the video and see when I said that. Well, anyway, next item is, uh.
Okay, so the 12,000 dollars that you're under, admirable, wonderful.
I'm sorry, I, Lu, Louis, Louis, somebody is asking a question, so I can't, I can't hear you both at the same time. Yes.
So admirable that we're 20, 12,000 dollars under budget for January through, I assume, September?
Uh, September only.
September, so you have those figures. But that under 12,000, that takes into consideration the over in our legal fees because of.
It's ev, it's everything, it's everything.
It's everything.
Yes.
And so our maintenance is being collected? And our bad debts are being diminished?
Correct. Yes.
Well, that's fantastic. It would be even better if we could see the numbers instead of just hearing your words.
Right.
Which we take at face value.
They, they're available in the office, actually. If you want to make a request for it, yeah, they're available. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
I'll do that.
Perfect. All right, so, um, the next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Dan?
Hello, everybody. My name is Dan Serlich. I'm your new manager. Uh, first off, I'd like to apologize that this past two weeks have been a complete shambles in the office. We got a virus into our computer that totally wiped out my computer. I have to start from scratch on my computer. It then started worming its way into the other, uh, computers in the office. Uh, we had somebody come in on Friday. He got rid of the virus. If you ever hear of a Thor virus, run. This thing is horrendous, okay? Whatever you put into your computer, it wipes out. Whatever you put in the next day, overnight, it wipes it out. Every, it just keeps perpetuating itself to the point where unless you get an actual professional in, as we did, these people who generate this will come, send you an email and hold you ransom.
Don't you use backup?
The backup didn't help because it just wiped everything out. Everything was gone. Okay, we tried doing a backup and the backup didn't work.
Prior, prior to having the virus, don't you do a backup every day?
Yes, we do a backup. Unfortunately, you had a gentleman named Carlos working here who had all the passwords to get into the server. When he was, uh, released, for whatever reason, and I had no idea what that was, he then decided he was not going to help us in any way, shape, manner or form. Okay, we have another IT gentleman who spent three days trying to break through the walls that were set up to find the passwords, okay? Could not do it. We had to bring in another person and more experience. He's been able to get halfway through it. Uh, a lot of your information is through, uh, GoDaddy. You have a domain, GoDaddy? GoDaddy will not let me in there without the password. Well, we can't get the password. So we're in the process of dealing with GoDaddy and getting, getting the password back so we can then retrieve everything that's on the server.
Are any of our files, have they been, uh, hacked?
Compromised.
Oh, that's a good one, compromised.
Again, I've only been here a few weeks. I can't answer whether they've been compromised or not. We're trying to find out exactly what this virus does other than wipe everything out.
That's a little scary.
Dan, my understanding is that it wiped out the, uh, the outlook, not the outlook, but the, the files that were on our local computer.
Yes, yeah.
The, um, the files that you're concerned about, the files that you're concerned about as far as account, accounts, that's kept with Campbell. It's, it's kept with Campbell on, on their server. So that server was not affected.
Right, it's only what, uh, what was locally in the, the office.
But don't we have to give information to Campbell? So from our files to theirs?
Well, we haven't sent anything, we haven't sent anything over.
I think everything is directly, uh, updated on TOPS itself, right? Which is the server that, uh, that Campbell uses to update any kind of, um, unit owner, uh, accounts or.
My, my, my computer was the only one that was really hit. The other two computers in the office were only starting to get it when we brought the, the, uh, professional in and he got rid of the virus. Their computers are still intact. Mine was the one that got totally wiped out. Anyway, as far as my manager's report is concerned, uh, I met with the maintenance staff to introduce myself and get to know the staff members and, uh, exactly what their jobs are on the property. Oracle Elevator is re-certifying your elevators. Uh, I attended the preliminary budget meeting with Campbell, uh, management and the executive committee. Uh, the budget is being prepared for discussion for the future board. Uh, spoke with Christine, who is the lady who runs the, uh, tea shop. She also is responsible, I understand, for the landscaping around the fountain. Um, I, I looked at it and I thought that it could do, use maybe some upgrading. Uh, so I spoke with her. She said she was going to take a look and come back to me and give me some of her ideas, what she thinks would make it look a lot nicer over there. Uh, I sent a letter to owners regarding the, uh, their screens that were ripped and, uh, torn and they're in the process of repairing their screens. Uh, a letter was sent to an owner who, uh, has illegal tenants. It's a one-bedroom apartment and they have, uh, four people in the, in the apartment. The city was here to inspect the spas and pool and found certain deficiencies. Beacharama was contacted to rectify any violations. There are still some minor violations still outstanding on the, uh, safety vacuum release system. Beacharama is in the process of rectifying these problems. Uh, complaint was made regarding interlacing elevated doors uh, being either stuck open or stuck closed. Oracle Elevator was contacted and sent, uh, a technician at no cost to the association to review and correct the ongoing problem. I inspected the pool area and found the landscaper, landscaper had blown debris into the pool after mowing the lawns. The sliding doors, uh, from the, uh, clubhouse to the outside pool needed cleaning and the sliding door frame of the indoor pool needed to be painted. Uh, a ladder was found and removed in the indoor spa. The door from the clubhouse to the indoor pool, which has been inoperable for some time, has been repaired and is functioning properly. Received an estimate from SNS Inventive Technologies to, uh, replace the compactor in the Yorkshire building for $4,240. I'm seeking competitive bids. Uh, in reviewing the invoice from T-Mobile, who, uh, provides all the phones for the, uh, office cell phones, uh, we discovered that, um, well, actually, the, the president and the treasurer questioned some of the charges on the invoice. I contacted, uh, T-Mobile and discovered that the previous manager's personal cellphone was on the account as well as four tablets. The owner of these tablets were unattainable. T-Mobile couldn't tell me who they belonged to just it's, they're on the account. Uh, the, the only thing they could do was tell me the, uh, the dates that they were activated. Uh, it appears that the amount spent on these tablets is minimal. Uh, T-Mobile is issuing a credit to our account for approximately $350 and discontinuing the service for those people. Uh, the security desk phone in the clubhouse has not been working for some time. A technician from the service company was called and informed me that although the line is active, the base and handset need to be replaced. He is forwarding me information on the phone so that we may purchase it from an outside company and avoid any additional charges for the replacement of the phone by the service company. He also looked at the phone in the guardhouse and determined that it was the handset and cord which was needed to be replaced. He will provide, uh, appropriate replacement parts. That is my report.
Okay, I'll, I'll allow a couple, sorry. I'll allow a couple of questions from the audience on that. Yes, go ahead. Uh, do we have a roving mic? Do we have a roving mic?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we have a guard? Oh, can you, well, how about, that's not roving.
Yes.
Okay, um, if you like, you can come up.
No, I think they take it out.
So, um, when you were walking around the pool deck area, did you happen to notice all the broken lounge chairs that have been accumulating alongside of the wall? That's one of the racquetball courts.
No, I ha, I didn't notice that, but I will go out there again tomorrow and I will take care of that.
But I believe they're gone.
Okay, if, if they are in need, either I will talk to, uh, George about that or I know of a mobile repair, uh, company. They will actually come out to the property uh, and for a lot less than what it would cost you to send it out. They will repair them right here on the property.
That's not what you said.
Wonderful. However, I believe they've been taken off of the property.
Well, I, I will find out about that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
I, I, I know that anything I had asked Dan to do when he first came, he took care of everything. And I went into his office today and I gave him a list of things that I need to have taken care of. And I hope by the next week they'll be done.
I, I hope by the end of the week they'll be done.
Yeah, they're the big ones.
Uh, I have two things, uh, about the pole that's still sitting on the side of the end. What for what?
Miriam, is this one of the items on, on the, uh, on the manager's report? If not, are you on the good and welfare? If it's not on the manager's report, are you on the good and welfare?
But I told him about it.
Okay, I'll, uh, go ahead.
A, a work order's been, been created for it and George and his crew have, you know, they have to prioritize things. It would, sometimes things that have to sit on the side if it's not, uh, an emergency situation, but it will, it will be taken care of.
All right, so, um, I don't have any questions. You mentioned about the phone. Uh, so we got, we got credited for that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Um, not sure how that happened, but anyway. Uh, we got the credit. Uh, next item on.
John, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Marcy.
I thought we had meetings the last Tuesday of the month. How come we have a meeting on a Monday?
It was, uh, there were a couple of board members who were not available, uh, on the Tuesday.
And they're still not.
Luckily, they're here now.
Yeah. Good one, good one, Dave. Um, that was funny, okay. So the next item is, uh, the sales and leasing report.
Who was doing that?
Can I ask?
Dan, Dan, could you, could you read the sales and leasing report, uh, for us?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is Carlos still on the property?
Uh, I.
Yes, the answer is yes.
I believe he, I don't know, he is, right? You've seen him?
I, I, yes, I have.
Okay.
Is Carlos still delinquent?
Is he still delinquent?
Probably.
How embarrassing would this be, these questions?
I don't know if he's delinquent, I haven't checked with.
I know he is, we all know he is.
He's living in one of our apartments?
Okay, if he is, he's, I'm sure he's paying rent. Is that correct, Dan?
He's not paying rent, he's delinquent.
Is he paying, is he paying?
I am getting a up-to-date, uh, delinquency report from Campbell.
Is he on it? He's been on it for months.
I don't know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the report.
He's been on it for months.
We'll take off the delinquency report at, at a near, a future meeting in the near future. Yeah.
Dan, you said you reached out to Carlos, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And Carlos, so Carlos basically said, you spoke to him and he actually said, "I refuse to provide this information." Hello?
Yeah, uh, no, actually what he did is he hung up on me. When I asked for the passwords, he said, "I don't do, I don't do that account anymore," and he hung up.
That sounds so out of character.
Wow, okay.
Doesn't sound like Carlos.
Does anyone find that a little strange? That we have a bug and the very, the very person who can actually fix the bug hangs up? I mean, that's a little strange.
That doesn't sound like Carlos.
Well, the bug is gone now. We got, we got ri, we got rid of the virus. The problem now is that we can't get into the server to put the things back into my computer because Carlos refuses to give us the, the passwords. Every time we try to call him, all he does is hang up on us.
From the apartment that he's living in, not paying. Does that make any sense to anybody?
And the A to Y is one N and three and two J. Uh, you know, John, also, you know, the, uh, cables that were put in for the Wi-Fi, they were only home cables, they are not commercial cables.
That's right, why don't you go after them and get our money back? And you pay them.
They are not commercial cables.
I understand that we're looking into that. And we probably will be able to take that up at the next meeting once we examine exactly what needs to be done.
I mean, that's why they're having so many.
Why don't we go after them and get our money back? That we, we paid them for that.
I have my own service.
And the cameras too. We paid them for this, I mean, and look at the job we did. Why don't we go ask them to get our money back?
That's, that actually isn't on the agenda right now, but hopefully we'll be able to, um, examine that issue, research all the options and come back to you with a more thorough report, uh, and, uh, potential solutions at the next meeting, hopefully.
But you know, but you know they are, they are home cables, they're not commercials.
I'm not the expert. We're, we're looking into it right now and hopefully by the next meeting we'll have, um, both the full report as well as a solution. Dan, what were we?
Sales.
Oh, sales and leasing.
Since August, uh, to the present, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 sales. You need to know which.
Well, basically, uh, just so you know, in the past, the way we've done it is, uh, we've read each of the sales, the price, the amount, as well as each of the new leases, um, and we waive reading of the rollovers. Do, does, I mean, do you want to do it, keep doing it that way or just do the sales, everybody?
No, I want to hear the, I want to hear.
Okay, let's hear, let's do it the way we normally do it. So if you could just go through all the sales, um, and the sale prices as well as all the rentals and the rent prices and, uh, we'll waive the reading of the rollovers.
Okay. Okay, the sales, uh, you, was Y3N? I hate to butcher anybody's name, but it looks like.
No, no, you don't need, just the, uh, unit number and, and the amount.
Okay, uh, 66,000. M3J, 79,000. M2G, 74,900. M1Z, 72,000. B3Z, 108,000. G2R, 58,500, that's pending. B3Q, 68,000. There are three here that I do not have what the price was. That was O2V, 13J, S1F. They're all one bedrooms. I don't have, I don't have the price on here. The person that did this obviously couldn't find the, the price for that.
Well, it should be on the, on the, uh, property appraiser's office eventually. It'll be updated eventually, so we can update that after the fact once the, uh, once the property appraiser puts it on the system.
Are any of these people actually going to live here?
No. They all have.
Well, they have to be here at least a year. And we're, we're being very, very strict about that. I don't know what your previous manager did, uh, but myself and the committee is being extremely strict to make sure that, uh, someone that is here less than a year or in one case, uh, we have someone who, uh, somehow at a, I believe was at a foreclosure auction, uh, we were in the process of trying to get them to switch it over because it was an LLC that bought it, which is against your documents. Uh, we're in the process of contact, we contacted them and we're in the process of putting the, their feet to the fire. They said that they were going to transfer it to a single individual. Uh, they, we have not heard anything. And if I don't hear anything within the next week or so, I'll approach the board as to what kind of legal action we want to take. Okay, leases, you have quite a few leases.
That was all the purchases?
Yeah, that was it. Now we go into almost a page and a half of leases. Uh, H3Y, 950. I1A, 1050. O3X, 1250. S1Y, 960. Y1E, 1300. Y1N, 995. Y, Y1U, 950. Y2G, 1100. Z1J, 1500. Z3I, 950. Z3W, 1250. B1A, 950. B2L, 1250. B3X, 1200. E2O, 1000.